Good evening and welcome to our December 1st, 2025 City Council Meeting. It'll be the last meeting of the year. We appreciate those of you who braved this treacherous weather to be here with us this evening. Now if we'll all stand and face the flag, joining me and my colleagues in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Remain standing for the invocation. Gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you today for this evening, Father God, even with the weather out there, you're protecting us. And we ask that you open all minds and hearts for the business that may come forth this council and for our community. Father God, we just thank you for this opportunity once again. It's Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, our citizens' recognition. Who is it this month?
It should be Mr. Garrett.
We, I have one that could not come this month. So I'd like to kind of push mine off maybe till next month to where he can be here. So, yeah.
Okay, moving on. Roll call.
Dishman?
Present.
Selby?
Present.
McIntosh?
Present.
Green?
Present.
Powell?
Here.
Garrett?
Present.
Go in?
Here.
Basham?
Here.
Basin?
Here.
Yeah, I entertain a motion for approval of last meeting's minutes.
Make that motion, Mr. President.
I second it.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Selby, seconded by Councilman Basham. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Appointments, the boards and commissions. They have one listed Beach Grove Cemetery Board.
Mr. President, I'd like to put that off till next month. So we have opportunity to look at more individuals.
Second. Or does it need a second?
Need to be a motion?
Your discretion.
Yeah, we can, we can do it next month. But there's gonna be several others that's gonna have to be made as well.
Yes, is there any way, uh, where's, oh, Mr. Walters, uh, that we can find out who has lots or what have you in our nominees or what have you? It's hard to find someone that has a lot. I know that's one of the requirements, so.
So many people, there's 50,000 people that got lots out there, so it's hard to tell that way. My suggestion would be if you get names, anybody gets names, want to be on the lot, to contact myself or office manager. And then we can look it up and see if they got them and get back with you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
That way we can be god for sure.
Okay.
Would you, conversely, would you email council if you have anyone that you would like to suggest as a member of your board? Since you know who meets qualifications and you know who would be a good fit, et cetera, et cetera, to give options?
I don't know if we done it yet, but it's gonna put it on our website. You know, we're, we're can get out to people that, there might be people that don't know that's been a family there for 20 years.
Absolutely.
Like to have opportunity to do it.
Okay, thank you.
We can do that.
Okay. Committee reports. Plan Commission, is Kylene Swackhammer or Matthew Nichols here?
Good evening, Kylene Swackhammer from the Plan Commission. We do not have our PowerPoint to put on the screen for you, but we have physical copies for you there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Matthew Nichols and I'm a project manager of East Central Indiana Regional Planning District's Safe Streets and Roads for All Federal Grant through the U.S. Department of Transportation. Today I have with me the wonderful Ms. Kylene Swackhammer, who is the Director of the Delaware-Muncie Metropolitan Plan Commission. And today our goal to you is introduce both of our organizations, this SS4A grant, and how this grant will benefit all of us in our communities. Let me start by introducing my organization. Now, the East Central Indiana Regional Planning District was founded in 2009. And our overall basic goal is to serve the economic development, planning, and grant development needs of Delaware, Blackford, Jay, and Grand Counties. Our director is Mr. Bill Walters, who came in around 2016. And I just want to let you know, since his administration started, we have put a 14 to 1 turnaround back into the communities from dues and grants collectively. We don't have a presentation with us today, but I'll read our mission statement as well, and it's to serve the local governments of the four counties I just mentioned by fostering a vision of regional economic growth through grant writing, facilitating infrastructure improvements, supporting economic development, simply promoting an overall quality of life. For anybody who wants to learn more information about my organization, you can go to www.vcirp.org and learn more about the grants we administer and take care of. At this time, I'll now turn it over to Kylene to introduce her organization and the SS4A grant.
Thank you.
So you guys are already pretty familiar with my office, but we are the Planning Department for the county and the city of Muncie. We also house the Building Commissioner for the county. He is also the Zoning Administrator and the Flood Plane Manager, who handles all permitting and zoning ordinance enforcement. We are also designated by the Governor of Indiana to serve as the NPO for our area. An NPO is responsible, responsible for federally mandated transportation planning and project selection in an area in order to receive federal transportation funds. An NPO works closely with local governments, state and federal agencies, and stakeholders to improve mobility, safety, and sustainability. The Safe Streets and Roads for All, or the SS4A grant, was established by the Infrastructure Investment and Job Act. This grant will appropriate $5 million over the five-year period of 2022 to 2026. In July of 2024, ECI RPD was awarded the SS4A federal grant. This was a $500,000 grant. Currently, there are still $2 billion available for future funding rounds, and we plan on seeking these funds. The initiative of this grant is to prevent roadway deaths and serious injuries. The SS4A program supports the U.S. Department of Transportation's National Roadway Safety Strategy, Vision Zero, and the Safe Systems Approach, which Matthew will talk about.
The Vision Zero, I just want to be clear, is a safe system approach itself. So the definition of Vision Zero, though, is a strategy to eliminate all traffic fatalities and severe injuries while keeping transportation healthy, equitable, and mobile for all. Like she said, the overall goal is to simply prevent all traffic fatalities and collisions. That's a big ask. So I do want to read you a quote, though, that is really important to go with that. And that's each year, more than 42,000 people, which is the population of a small city, and even more than some of our cities here, are easily killed on American streets, and many thousands more are injured. And the problem is, is we call this accident, or we call this traffic accidents, but the real thing is these are traffic collisions. Notice the change in the word there at the end. And then also down here at the bottom, I'd like you to look at that visual. This traditional approach is called a conventional approach, and how we now put it against a safe system approach. I don't know about any of you folks, but I don't believe saving lives is expensive. Now, let's talk about a little bit more, what is a safe system approach? So like she said about the national highway, this is a system that has been embraced by the transportation community as an effective way to address and mitigate the enormous and inherited risk in our complex transportation system. What it does is it designs a system with minis and redundancies in place to try to protect everyone from happening when crashes do occur, because like I said, we're not going to be able to be perfect. They're gonna still happen. But hopefully we can prevent the, you know, the minimizing when they do happen. This first came about in 1990s around Europe, and it's gaining major, uh, populated American cities because the data's proven successful. It works. So what's really important about this, too, is again, like I showed you in the last graphic, this is a major shift from the conventional approach now, because this safe system approach is focusing on human mistakes and vulnerability and trying to again design a system with many redundies, redundancies in place to protect everyone. And like I said again, this is adopted by the National Roadway Safety Strategies Department, Vision Zero.
So how does this grant benefit you, council members, and our community in general? At the end of this, we said it started in 2024. This was a two-year grant, so we are kind of nearing the tail end of this. And we will hopefully be having our finalized plan in early, the first quarter of next year. We will have a regional transportation safety action plan, which will allow us to seek those implementation dollars for safety projects, road projects, and that type of thing. Fewer serious injuries and fatalities occur with safety improvements. Long-term economic growth is supported by sustainable infrastructure, mobility and connectivity can be enhanced. Community resilience is strengthened through regional collaboration, and projects in your area can be completed using these implementation dollars. We need your engagement. Local leaders like you possess knowledge of the most pressing concerns in your community. We are kindly asking for your feedback on key safety concerns specific to your jurisdictions, existing safety initiatives in your areas, opportunities for inter-county collaboration. And we are striving to be inclusive of all stakeholders within the four counties of Blackford, Delaware, Grant, and Jay. We have three to four representatives from each county serving on a steering committee. Members are collaborating, reviewing data, and providing input and feedback at periodic committee meetings. We have already held three committee meetings this year, and we anticipate having one more meeting before the end of this year. We also have included a flyer with some QR codes. There are surveys available there. There is a map where you can mark areas of concern and provide your feedback that way. But we just kind of wanted to make you aware of this process, now that it's kind of coming to an end, to let you know kind of what we've been doing on this period, that we've been working on this, and what the final result will be.
For anybody else that wants this piece of paper to fill out our survey, you can go to our website again, you can contact us after this. I'd be happy to work with anybody to make sure your voice is heard on this grant as well, too. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Any questions from the council?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll leave some of these up here, too, for the public.
Okay, moving on. Ordinance is previously introduced.
Yeah, I'm on here again. I'm gonna wear out my welcome.
Oh, you are. You are on there twice.
Never.
Action framework.
Okay, so Kylene Swackhammer, Plan Commission again. So I do have another Thank you. Subject to talk about this evening, and that is the Together DM Action Framework. So I have provided you all with a copy of this document. You all are familiar with your comprehensive plan for Muncie and Delaware County, which is the Together DM. So that was finished in 2022. I am a board member of MAP, and MAP took on the project of, hey, let's take another look at the Together DM and see what's sitting there. What are some things that the Together DM talked, Together DM talked about that we need to take action on? And let's kind of create a document that kind of outlines those action steps for us. We didn't want the document to just sit on the shelf. We wanted to be able to utilize it. So the Together Action Framework was what came out of that process. The purpose was to build on the foundation of the Together DM to translate that vision into action. So in 2024 and 2025, MAP, task forces, and steering committees held meetings. We identified existing and potential partners, we conducted outreach and surveys to, so that we could collect a diverse range of skills, resources, and perspectives on the items that the Together DM identified. The three overarching goals of the Together DM, or the three big things, as we call them, are to improve quality of place, to strengthen housing conditions and options, and to expand opportunities for upward mobility. So in looking at those three things, we did some surveys. And for quality of place, the things that came out as the top priorities, based on those surveys, were to invest in road and street conditions, prioritizing conditions, zoning code in need of modernization. For the topic of strengthening housing conditions and options, the prioritizing winners were increased investment in appealing housing, increased investment in existing housing, reduced residential properties that show visible signs of disinvestment, ensure new housing strengthens existing neighborhood infrastructure, and provide access to diverse housing options, and expect and require high quality from private investments. Under the topic of expanding opportunities for upward mobility, the highest priorities were to reduce segregation of low-income families into areas of high poverty, increase low-income housing options in high-income areas, increase opportunities to build skills and experience, intentional decision-making, increase I-READ free test scores in Muncie community schools, maintain third-grade county reading scores at or above the state average, update the comprehensive zoning ordinances, offer affordable residential opportunities in downtown Muncie. The next steps after this document was created is for my office to kind of take ownership of this document along with MAP and to keep track of progress, set goals, set timelines that we expect, and kind of provide a continuous feedback loop where we can report on that progress. So we have made, we have connected with a lot of stakeholders, a lot of partners, a lot of agencies, individuals, people that are already doing these things in our neighborhoods and communities so that we can keep track of those things and report to everybody all these things that we are working together on. So our next steps, progress reports, keep stakeholders and elected officials informed of our progress, build on partnerships, and secure some public and private investments. The reporting on this will be done at MAP's annual report to the community. So that meeting is usually held in January. We have a little more concrete than tentative date of January 26th, 2026, for our next annual report to the community, and that will be at 6:00 PM at Ivy Tech. So what I would like from you as elected officials is to please communicate with me if there are any agencies, organizations that you know of that are not listed in this document that you think are doing this work in our communities that we could collaborate with on. Any questions? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now moving on. Ordinance is previously introduced. Ordinance 34-25.
Ordinance 34-25. An ordinance to amend the City of Muncie Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance from the split zone of the R3 Resident and R4 Resident Zone to the R3 Resident Zone on premises located at 100 North Hudson Avenue.
Is there anyone here to speak on this ordinance?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we adopt ordinance 3425.
Let me check it there. Okay, motion made by Councilman Basham, seconded by Councilman Green. Roll call.
Garrett?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
McIntosh?
Yes.
Basham?
Yes.
Jolene?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, ordinance 35-25.
Ordinance 35-25, an ordinance for additional appropriations, Muncie Police Department.
Councilman Basham or Dishman, have any kind of reports, committee reports on this?
No.
Anything to?
No, not since our last meeting.
Okay.
Mr. President, I make a motion to adopt ordinance 35-25.
I second.
Okay, motion's made by Councilman Powell, seconded by Councilman Basham. Okay. All in favor?
No.
Is that a roll call?
The public comment, yeah.
Any public comment on this?
Hello, speaking with Muncie Police Department, just here in case anybody had any questions, and I want to let you guys know I stopped a gentleman that just left about the traffic stuff and roadway safety, so him and I will be talking hopefully here, please.
Councilman Basham.
Mr. Diggin, will you explain to those present where this money is coming from and what you're going to be spending it on?
Sure. We discussed this last time. From our cash balance in our public safety tax dollars that we have, we intend to use the capital equipment to purchase some vehicles, and the PERF, ERF, Public Employee Retirement Fund is the shore of the PERF line item for the rest of the year, as we've been more stable staff these years, it'll fund the police officer.
Yes. So just for clarification, this is coming from your public safety lit that cannot be used for, that other departments are unable to use?
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because people were asking if that's taking away from other departments. I was getting questions about that, and I want to make it clear that this is not taking away from any other departments. This is money that is specific for the police department and is theirs to use.
Yeah, and we've done this in years past. Council's been pretty supportive throughout the years of doing this. We budget pretty conservatively and try to maintain through the year. When we get near the end of the year, if we have some expenditures that we would like to tackle to get ahead of things, what we, we don't seek to try to utilize new general fund dollars. We like to use public safety dollars that we have available in cash balances.
Thank you.
Mr. President, may I comment? And I'd just like to thank Mr. Wright for providing a budget performance report that helps us keep up with a monthly report on how these line items are being spent and what percentage is left. That allows us to make these decisions more easily. Thank you, Mr. Wright, for that, monthly.
Now roll call.
Yes.
Basham?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
McIntosh?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Basin?
Yes. Okay, ordinance 36-25.
Ordinance 36-25, an ordinance for additional appropriations, Fire Department EMS.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we adopt ordinance 3625.
Second. Okay, motion's made by Councilman Basham to adopt, seconded by Councilman Green. Anyone here to speak on this?
Good evening, council. Much like police department, we're asking for some additional appropriations. This is to cover overtime expenses for the remainder of the year and for the purchase of an ambulance. These funds that we're asking for are funds that are in our Fund 104, which is our EMS billing revenue and our fire protection contract with the Center Township Trustee's office.
Okay, you asking for $260,000 in overtime?
Yes, sir.
And 323,329,521 requested for vehicles?
That's correct, yep. That's for an ambulance that will be fully equipped with new power loader and power pot as well.
President?
Yes, Councilman.
Just for the public's, just to know, where would that ambulance be based?
Well, this ambulance that will be coming in would either be at Station 1, Station 3, or Station 7. So as they come in, we're, we're going through, looking at the mileage, looking at the conditions.
Needs it most of the time, yeah. Okay.
I have a question. This is not specifically to this, if that's okay with you, but it kind of ties with the overtime. All right. Did you, did the fire department, did you guys have a recruitment, open period in the fall?
We are currently taking applications.
You still are, okay. And then what are you doing to promote that?
Well, we've been using social media.
Okay.
It's pretty much what we've been promoting it. We're working on a promotional video that we should be getting completed fairly quickly, that we're gonna try to get out here by the end of the week, hopefully, because our application process ends December 31st currently.
Okay, so the promotional video is not here, and the process ends December 31st?
Correct, it does right now, yes.
Is there a way to extend, I mean, have you gotten any responses?
We have. We have.
You have?
Yeah, we currently have, I believe it's about fifty-five applications.
Oh, that's good, okay, that's, thank you for letting us know, thank you so much.
To extend the process, that would take a vote from the mayor's commission. But that's something we have done, and we have done that in the past.
And, and the number, may I, Mr. President? And is the number fifty-five like a good number for you? Have you had?
Two years ago, we had a hundred and forty-nine applicants.
Okay.
So it is down.
It is down, okay. So is there anything that you can send us council person so we can promote it and, you know me?
Absolutely, I can mail you guys a flyer that has all the information on it that we have.
Okay, thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
I've got one kind of, this kind of a statement in a firsthand. Uh, I got to kind of firsthand see the, the cots in action, the automated power cots is what you would say. So, um, I got a phone call about two thirty in the morning about two weeks ago. Uh, my mom was behind me, had ran behind, she had to go to the hospital, get her gallbladder out. Well, she couldn't move, she was on the couch and she couldn't move. It was hurt, she, it was very painful for her to get lifted, touched, anything. Well, they brought the power cot in from the ambulance, what she has, pretty steep driveway. Some rocks over it too, pavers, all that. It goes over it, picks her up where she's comfortable. And puts her on the cot, over the rocks, a steep driveway, pavers, all that, back into the ambulance with zero discomfort to my mom. And I did not, and I'm not just looking at it because it's my mom, but to see that in action firsthand was a pretty eye-opening to how important those are. To every call that you would go on that needs the cot. It is, uh, it was very, um, eye-opening to know that she was not in any pain. She got on the cot, into the ambulance, into the hospital, perfectly fine with that cot. So I got to see firsthand how those are very well needed in, in every aspect. So I just wanted to speak on that to, to let everyone know how crucial that is when you're in that pain or you're that call. You know, we're, we, one of us might be that call one day that we, we need that comfort of that cot. So to see that in action and, uh, and, uh, you know, the firefighters that came and took care of my mom, you know, and I know that do every citizen in the city. Um, I appreciate it. And it was really nice to, you know, I, I don't want to hope she's not listening, I don't want to take that discomfort from her, but be able to see that in action. To know that all calls that need that, that they're, they're, that our citizens are getting that treatment and to make sure that they're that comfortable from their residence to the hospital in the ambulance and on beyond is, uh, it's very rewarding and I, I thank you and your department for that, so thank you.
Thank you very much for the comment.
Yep.
Yeah, the comfort of our patients is obviously about most important, but uh, one of the great benefits of the power cots is the elimination of lifting injuries to our.
Oh, yeah, and I got to see that.
Pay for themselves over and over again, just as well.
Yeah, that firsthand, when they put her in there and locked it in and lifted it up is just, it's, it's, you know, to make sure that we're, we're kind of covering all basis of, of, of what we need to cover with those. So it's, uh, it's just nice to know that everyone all around is taken care of with those cots.
You have a question, Councilman Phil?
I'm going to go back to my question. Is there a way that you can contact or get, um, you know, work with the human rights, not human rights, I'm sorry, my, human resources? To see how many people applied for other jobs? Use that list and send information to them if they might be interested. I mean, is there a data, could you send, um, like for people who applied and didn't get it last time? Are you sending, are you actively sending more information or another letter? Or reaching out to them through email, letting them know the process is open?
Yeah, that is something that we can definitely do.
We could do that.
We get applications from the Human Resources Department where people will apply.
Yeah.
And they'll apply for everything, so they'll click firefighter, paramedic.
Yes.
When we get those, we do reach out to them as well and say, if you are interested in, in being a member of the Muncie Fire Department. We have an application process going and we give them information for that link as well.
Okay, so my question, have you done that this time around?
We have been doing that with the applicants that we've been getting through HR and not through our formal application process.
Okay.
But we can absolutely reach out to those people who applied last time and didn't.
Please.
Either get employed or make the, pass the written exam or the physical agility so that they know that we're in the middle of it again, absolutely.
So that's a promise you're going to do that before December thirty-fourth, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
McIntosh?
Yes.
Basham?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Yes.
Goliath?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance thirty-seven dash twenty-five.
Ordinance thirty-seven dash twenty-five. An ordinance fixing the salaries for the all elected officials of the city of Muncie, Indiana for the year twenty twenty-six.
I make a, Mr. President, I make a motion to adopt thirty-seven dash twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mrs. Powell to adopt, seconded by Councilman McIntosh. Anybody here to speak on it? Anybody here to speak on ordinance thirty-seven dash twenty-five?
Good evening, I just wanted to see if I had any questions.
So these, these three, these three ordinances, can they all be done, that have to be done separately? Since they're all the same, okay. Okay, roll call.
Basham?
Yes.
McIntosh?
Yes.
Selfie?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Goliath?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, ordinance thirty-eight dash twenty-five.
Ordinance thirty-eight dash twenty-five. An ordinance amending ordinance sixteen dash twenty-five, fixing the maximum salaries of each and every appointed officer, employee, deputy, assistant, departmental and institutional head of the city of Muncie, Indiana, included herein for the year of twenty twenty-six.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we adopt ordinance thirty-eight twenty-five.
I'll second that. Mr. President?
Okay. Yes.
I'm going to make a motion that we amend this title. Um, I believe that title, the page that we have right now in front, I think Ms. Jones already put it on top, but the original one has, um, refers to amending ordinance sixteen point, or dash two-five. Which is incorrect.
I'll second that motion.
Yep.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Gilliam that this ordinance be amended, seconded by Councilman Powell.
Would you repeat what the amendment is?
Yes, so in, if the title should, needs to be amended and it should be ordinance thirty-eight point two, I'm sorry, dash two-five seeks to establish the salaries of every appointed officer, employee, deputy, assistant, departmental and institutional head of the city, except police and fire for twenty twenty-six. That's what the first one is, but in the second page of this is original.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, all in favor of the amendment of ordinance sixteen dash twenty-five, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Who cares? Okay. Anyone here to speak on that ordinance?
Uh, just wanted to know if you had any questions on, on this?
Yes, Council.
Mr. Wright, um, do we, why do we have a salary ordinance for the Assistant Director of Animal Shelter when there's no money budgeted in that line item in the budget?
It, it's the line item, the salary ordinance for that, it's just, it sets the maximum for each one and it doesn't reflect on the budget. If we took, if it's no longer in there on the budget, it's not going to be budgeted for.
Okay, so Assistant Director of Animal Shelter, Deputy Mayor, those are both not going to be filled. I just didn't know if we were going to pay for those out of edit or if that was a plan for the administration had, okay? And then, um, as we discussed very briefly, and I'm sorry, it's trap, um, getting here with snowy mess, so I meant to be here earlier to talk to you. I brought up that animal shelter, Beech Grove, uh, human rights and the Assistant Prairie Creek Director were all, uh, their salary ordinances. Put them above what we budgeted in the line item for, uh, for the budget. Ordinance thirty-eight dash twenty-five, which we're acting on now. Those salary ordinances will give them a higher salary than the ballot, than the budget, that the salary we adopted in ordinance thirty dash twenty-five, which is the budget. And you're saying we don't need to address that?
Well, the what that, the salary ordinance sets a maximum on it. As far as the budgets, I mean, we could, you can adjust the budgets during the year. I mean, if you have to make amendments.
And my only concern, may I continue, I'm sorry. My only concern is that we had that same discussion last year, that the salary ordinances were the maximum amount. They didn't necessarily mean we were going to pay them amount, that amount, but we ended up paying every single one that amount and on, in some cases over. My biggest concern is the Assistant Prairie Creek Reservoir Director, their salary ordinance is five thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars over our line item budget. For them, for the, I mean, that's a significant amount, the others are a thousand dollars here or there. Uh, animal shelter is just twenty-eight dollars, but, but that five thousand dollars is, is significant. And so we just can be assured that, that you're not going to be increasing over and above what we adopted. Okay, all right, um, may I, I have two more questions. Do we have a superintendent of streets?
It's Adam Leach's Superintendent Streets, Donnie, I'm sorry.
So the Superintendent of Streets is, he is the Superintendent of Streets. He is the one that is earning thirty-two, thirty-six, forty-four every two weeks. That is Mr. Wright? He is the Superintendent of Streets.
I believe so.
And so then the, does he, and he answers to Adam Leach? Okay, and is Adam Leach a, do we contract with a company for engineering services or do we contract with Mr. Leach?
It's with the company.
So Mr. Leach does not receive a paycheck from the city of Muncie.
Correct.
He receives a paycheck from his, okay, all right, because I, again, there was a, uh, a salary ordinance for street superintendent and it was my understanding that Mr. Wright is not the street superintendent. He is the, the underneath the street superintendent, and then we have a line, a salary in, for the city engineer. And again, I just was concerned because of the way that it is recorded in the budget, it's just one lump item. Just was concerned that we were, just concerned where our money is going, so those are the only questions I had. But I did want to point out that we are, we are over on those line items.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank.
Okay, roll call. Yes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Gilliam, seconded by Councilman Garrett.
Howell?
Yes.
Selfie?
Yes.
Goliath?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
McIntosh?
No.
Basham?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes. Okay, ordinance thirty-nine dash twenty-five.
Ordinance thirty-nine dash twenty-five, an ordinance fixing the maximum salaries of each and every member of the Muncie Fire Department of the city of Muncie, Indiana for the year twenty twenty-six.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we adopt ordinance thirty-nine dash twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Powell, seconded by Councilman Green. Chief.
Here, see if you have any questions about salary ordinance.
You want to have any question?
Yes.
Basham?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
McIntosh?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Selfie?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
May I ask our council a question?
Yes.
So since the police department did not do a salary ordinance and it won't be passed before January first, will that cause an issue?
I mean, you've appropriated money for it, I'm not sure why that wasn't filed. I would think they can continue to pay in perfect appropriations, but maybe a question from state board of council.
Okay, because I was always taught they had to be adopted by the thirty, the thirty-first. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no new ordinances or resolutions? No decisions? This is not a bill. Ready?
Yes.
Ellen Whitehead.
Hi, uh, my name is Ellen Whitehead, I'm a Muncie resident and I do want to start by saying that my, my views do not represent those of my employer. The council may remember that I spoke at last month's meeting to express my disappointment and how the council voted on ordinance forty twenty-five. Which would have ensured that the signature affixed to an ordinance or resolution is used with the full knowledge and consent of the sponsoring council member. I continue to be disappointed, but perhaps even more so confused by the council's rejection of this proposal. Ensuring that we do things with integrity and transparency should not be a partisan issue. Given Muncie's long history of concerns regarding public trust towards the city government, I would imagine the current council wants to establish, establish themselves as on the right side of this issue. To me, this was a straightforward and common sense vote and I fail to see a good reason why the council voted no. Why would we not want to establish and uphold clear standards for how our city government is run, especially given recent evidence that such standards are needed? Why would we not want to do whatever we can to promote public trust in the council and our city government? As the council can see, I feel strongly enough about this topic that I am returning to this issue. I respectfully ask that the council revisit the proposed, the proposal outlined in ordinance forty twenty-five. I am asking that the ordinance be reintroduced for the January meeting and that the council vote in favor of this common sense proposal, thank you.
Thank you. Very well said.
Alex Kluber.
Kubler? Hi, council, uh, my name is Alex Kluber, uh, my opinions are my own and do not express the views or opinions of my employer. I also want to ask council to reconsider ordinance forty dash twenty-five from the November third meeting. I feel that it was a common sense change to the filing procedures and I feel like it makes no sense that it should fall along party lines. Uh, many Muncie residents like myself attend council meetings because it's one of the few ways to get insight into and provide input into how our city government works. We expect that the members of council, as our elected representatives, act independently of the mayor's office. That an ordinance carrying your name has your support in a meaningful way and that you bring it to council in a proactive and intentional way. The change in the council procedure. The change in the council procedure described by ordinance 40-25 would reassure the public that the council is following through on those things. I don't think Muncie residents want council members to take a backseat to the mayor's office in setting the city's legislative agenda, so I urge you to reconsider ordinance 40-25. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm having a hard time reading. I think it's Presley. Okay, Jeanette, okay. Sorry about that, just.
Hello, guys, Jeanette Presley. So I'm here about something totally different from before. So I have a service dog, guys all know that, name is Bernard. And I have had some issues with some new businesses in town with Bernard. So he is not a support dog, is not a pet. Is a medical alert service dog for seizures. He came out of a medical alert program out of Greenwood, Indiana called Medical Mucks. So he's licensed, has a license. You have, we have a new business in our neighborhood at the end of Batavia and 8th Street. It's a convenience store. And I've been conveniently kicked out of there with my service dog and the police called on me. And I waited on them to come. He's licensed, he can come in there, he can go wherever I go. Therefore, we had an incident. The gentleman called the police on me. He refused to give me what I needed from the store. And I waited on the police. Of course, the police tried to explain to him, he doesn't speak well in English. And so there was some issues. So that is one issue I've had. The other issue I had is Walmart. I went to Walmart to shop for groceries for Thanksgiving. And I was approached three different times and all three times, he's too big, he's this, he's that. I'm sorry, he's a service dog, he's trained, he's medically trained and he takes care of me. Yes, he's big because I'm big. And so, you know, if I fall, he breaks that fall. A little dog, I would smash to pieces. You know, I've had Bernard five years and before I had a, I had another service dog and he was a St. Bernard also. So therefore, we need to do something and get these people on board that are working out in our public. Because I know people take dogs in everywhere that are not service dogs. But Bernard has a thing. I wear a tag when I have him with me. I would like to be left alone. I would like to be able to go in and do my business and stuff. So the human rights, I've called them here. I've called the American Disabilities Act. I reported it all. But last time Ro sent a letter out and it was resolved. I think that maybe you guys could do that again.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Yeah, we will do that again. I think we have new businesses that come in and especially, I mean, I'm originally from another country. So it takes us a while to kind of learn the rules and, and stuff. So I think I would, you, do you, so you did report it then to the Human Rights Commission?
Yeah, I left them, I had to leave a message. I didn't get anybody and now I understand that she's not there anymore. So I don't know who took her place.
Yeah, so, okay, so if you don't mind, I can talk to Pastor Mitchell, who is the president of the Human Rights Commission, I believe. And they will send the same letter out. And, and I, anytime the public, if this happens, just contact, sometimes Walmart has no excuse. I think Walmart needs a little bit more, I don't know, if it's an investigation or a serious thing for them because they should know better. But I would, you know, so I will help you again and I will talk to Pastor Mitchell myself.
I mean, I went to, when I went to Walmart to do my grocery shopping, and that was just recently, I was stopped by three different sets of employees.
Do you remember the date of that?
So.
You can send me that information later.
It was on Tuesday. The Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
25th.
The 25th.
And that was the South Walmart?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys.
Bernard does have visible.
So he wears a bandana that shows a medical symbol on it and it says medical service dog and his name. So yes, he does, he wear, he has it on when he's here, when he's here. But he does not like the vest. He never has liked vests. And so legally, he doesn't even have to wear anything as long as I have the thing around my neck. But I do have the bandana that he wears and he always wears it when we're out in public, so. But he is not a pet. And I, and I tried to explain to them that he is not a pet. And, you know, but they did not want to listen. Me, you know, I mean, I had three different employees. Like I just couldn't even get through the store, you know, that they weren't, you know. And he is a very well behaved, very well trained animal. And yeah, y'all know him, so thank you.
Thank you. Sorry that happened too.
Sarah Byte.
Hi, I, my views don't express the views of my employer. And I want to thank my, my friends and neighbors, Ellen and Alex, for the comments that they made earlier about ordinance 40-25. I, I too think that this was a, this was a softball. Like this was a, this was an easy opportunity to show some good faith to the citizens of Munc, of Muncie that, that you're on our side, that you care about being transparent and open and clear. And the partisan element of the vote was confusing. We were surprised. It didn't seem like it would go that way. This seemed like one of the kind of easy ones that like, yeah, we want to do the right thing by folks in Muncie. And you know what, I think Ellen mentioned the history of some lack of transparency in our city that a lot of you campaigned on. And your goal was to, to rectify that and that you care about. And, and so did the mayor's office. And so I, you know, I really ask that you reconsider, that you bring back this ordinance or, you know, another one that you'd have to give a new number to. But in order to, to show that, that you're committed to us first and foremost and folks who, who care about the city and who've made this our home, so thanks.
Thank you.
Beth, Beth Munson?
Can't tell what.
Messner, oh, okay, there she is.
Hi there, I'm Beth Messner. I'm here representing the Riverside Normal City neighborhood. My views do not express, reflect those of my employer. I'm here to kind of do a status check on ordinance 2925, which was designed to eliminate all parking on University Avenue from the University Village to Wheeling. I do understand that our neighborhood association does understand that this ordinance has been tabled. We are curious about when it might be untabled and brought back before the council. I believe Councilman Green, you are the person who tabled it.
I'm the one that tabled it. It's a good possibility it'll be brought up next month.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
I also had a second question. Given that there's not been a vote taken on this particular ordinance, we are curious about why striping has been completed on University Avenue down the center of the street, which does not appear to accommodate parking, which is currently legal on the south side of the street. If you look at the striping particularly between Wheeling Avenue and Reserve, you will notice that there are several places where cars, when the paint was wet, had to veer out around parked vehicles because the striping does not appear to be properly aligned to allow for parking on the south side of the street.
Mr. President?
Councilman Golean.
Yeah, I, I was actually hoping that we could ask the administration that tonight because I'd heard that and seen that too. And unfortunately, they're not here. But yeah, I think we, I think the association can also reach out and find that, you know, and ask them. And I think we might do that too.
Heather Williams had asked me about that. And so I emailed Donnie Wright. And he said, "We are just striping the center line as of now, but pending ordinance 29-25's approval of removing parking, we would then add the bike lanes markings." And that was on November 13th. So as of right now, it's just the center line.
So it feels a whole lot like the administration is moving forward on bike lanes without the council's approval. And I hope the council is as concerned about that as the neighborhood association is. This is not what this process is supposed to look like.
Well, I don't think that striping it down the middle would give anybody an indication that they were moving forward.
It certainly looks that way to us.
Well, that's just striping that they would do anyway.
Not in that position. In that position, the striping is there to accommodate a bike lane on the north side and the south side of the street.
Mr. President, I would like to ask a question. Could you tell me what the width of the road is in that area?
I do not have those measurements with me. We have measured, we did have a resident that went to measure and the striping is down the center of the street. I think there's one foot additional space on the, on one side of the street than the other. But it's not striped to appropriately accommodate currently legal parking on the south side of the street. If that had been done, that stripe would have been moved further toward the north edge of the street.
Do you have a measurement from the stripe to the north side and a measurement from the stripe to the south side?
I do not have measurements with me. I would be happy to, to get those measurements for you. But it looks to us like it's a done deal. And that is very frustrating.
It has yet to be voted on, so it's not a done deal, so.
I also wondered, I have a third question, if we have any idea when the curbing will be completed on University Avenue? Currently, there are three blocks between Reserve and Dick Street that do not have curbing. The street department attempted to, they paved and left a foot of gravel on each side, north and south side of the pavement to presumably accommodate curbing. And then last Friday, a whole bunch of dirt, dirt was just dumped in the gutters by the street department. I saw the street department doing that. So that means now that anybody who is parking on the south side of University Avenue has to get out of their car and step in mud, literally four or five inches of mud. Because what was to be the gutter and which is not yet a gutter was filled with dirt. Any ideas what's going on there?
I know, we'd have to check with the street department. I mean, we wouldn't have that information unless.
All right. Well, obviously, all of those things concern us. And we look forward to continued conversation about this in the January meeting.
What hundred block of University are those curbs missing from? Our ballpark figure?
Yeah, I'll, I'll send all of that information.
Okay.
Yeah, it's three blocks.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Linda Hansen.
Good evening. I'm Linda Hansen, spokesperson for the League of Women Voters in Muncie, Delaware County. And I'm prompted to speak this evening about transparency and accountability. Ordinance 4025, which you've heard about already again tonight, filed by Nora Powell, failed to be introduced on November 4th by a party line vote of 5 for, with councilpersons Dishman, Selby, Garrett, Basham, and Green voting no. The ordinance was prompted by a resolution, Resolution 1725, filed in October by the mayor's executive assistant without the knowledge of the councilperson listed as its sponsor, Neil Basham. Councilmember Basham had filed and signed a previous version of this resolution, which had been withdrawn, and the mayor's office reused Basham's signature from the prior resolution. I attended that October meeting and was both baffled and alarmed by the evident confusion. Were there not procedures in place to ensure legitimate action by council members? In November, councilmember Nora Powell sponsored the ordinance that would require all future ordinances and resolutions to be filed directly by a councilperson or by legal counsel. The goal was to prevent this same kind of mistake and potential impression of mis, of impropriety in the future. The ordinance failed on party lines. Together as a council, however, you are responsible for city government. Allowing others to sign without your knowledge is an abdication of that responsibility. Muncie has a history of corruption that has attracted media attention and convictions at various levels. And it appears it doesn't matter which party is the majority. As Muncie residents, citizens, and voters, we deserve better. Any hint of misdeeds can trigger accusations of corruption. I'm not saying this is, but there's a hint of that. And it would be useful if we could build transparency and accountability into procedures for city business because this recent incident raises concerns and questions of trust. And as a recent headline noted, if you have transparency, you don't get this one. So whether ordinance 4025 can be refiled or a new one proposed, the league urges you to revisit the issue of transparency and accountability and working together for the benefit of all citizens of Muncie.
Thank you. Okay, is there anything else? Yes.
Seth Rowland, sorry for not signing up. I got here a little after 7:00. I was just trying to speak because today the Indiana House of Representatives announced a redistricting map for the state of Indiana. It's a, I think it's actually particularly bad for Muncie. It's a, we have a weird alignment where it basically carves out Muncie and Albany and puts us all the way north up to Angola in the Elk Park County area. It's, it's a very, I mean, it also splits Indianapolis into four separate territories. I think it's a, it's, it's not, it's not the cleanest map you've ever seen in the world. And this is not in your guys' purview, but I would really recommend anybody on council, along with anybody in the audience or listening online, please send some notes to your representatives. In, in our area, your representative could be Sue Arrington, Elizabeth Roway, or J.D. Prescott. And our senator is Scott Alexander. Send notes to the office. Please tell them to vote no on legislation that basically carves out the city of Muncie and puts us with Fort Wayne, Angola, in a weird, in a very strange congressional district. So I just thought that'd be very important to mention tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Daisy Dale. I was curious about the opioid advisory committee or the opioid fund advisory committee because I know that three appointments were done by council. And there's three that are supposed to be done by the mayor. Does anybody know if the mayor's made those appointments yet?
Yes, I do know that he has.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anyone else?
Mr. President, may I announce for everyone, Light Up Muncie is on Thursday night from 5:00 until 8:00. There is a lighted parade that begins at 5:30 that will start at City Hall and take us through downtown at Cannon Commons, Performances Yacht. It will be a great celebration, lighting up Muncie Thursday night, 5:00 to 8:00. Bundle up.
Okay. Yes, come up.
Forgive me, this is kind of unserious, but I'm Sala Derby and I'm a senior at Muncie Central. And for my AP Government class, we are doing a mock presidential election and I'm running for president. And so if anyone is willing to talk to me about my policies and give me an endorsement, like just a photo, I would love it. So thank you so much.
Okay, our council is endorsing. Okay. Well.
Mr. President?
Then I entertain a motion.
Mr. President, before we close the meeting, I'd like to make a, a comment to everyone, those that are here and those that are watching tonight. We're coming up on the Christmas season, and there are many shut-ins, particularly elderly, that may not have anyone looking in on them. And I would like to ask the community to go out and adopt one of these individuals. Check them out, make sure they're okay, take them a meal, maybe even take them a present. Let them know that they do matter. There are a lot of lonely people out there this time of year. I want you to think about that. If you were in that position, would you like someone to do that for you? So, take the time to invest your time into the life of someone else. And don't let it just be at Christmas time, but take it through the whole winter. Check on them, because I've seen some elderly people out trying to shovel snow, had no business doing it. So, I definitely would like to see the youth step up and do things. So, Ms. President, this may be something that you could speak to those at the high school level, individual students that would get out and invest their time in helping others. I think we'd be a stronger community if we put forth the effort and do so. Thank you.
Great.
Yes, sir.
Mike Sullivan, I live at two-six-one-five West Purdue Avenue. I'm all for transparency. Sorry about my voice. So, I, I hope you'll call forty twenty-five up and reconsider the vote on that. Four-five is a very bad kind of division on a partisan basis. I was initially really impressed with this particular group of councilpersons, this council. When the beginning, we had this great sense of working together and sharing ideas, and it seems like it's kind of dissipating. I don't understand what underlies that, what's behind it, but transparency is essential, absolutely essential. And I think one thing that would help transparency would be something that seldom occurs in a city council meeting, and that is you vote yes or no, but we never know why you vote yes or no. And I think it would help the whole community if we had a better idea why you vote yes or no for any bill before you, a resolution. So, that'd be just a suggestion I would make. I'd like to hear more about your dialogue and your thinking on the issues and share it with us so that we have a better understanding where you stand. Thank you.
Thank you. There's nothing else. I entertain a motion to adjourn. So, move. Motion made by Councilman McIntosh.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Gill. Hold a favor?
I.
All opposed?